Here, here we go. I'd like to call to order the November 7th meeting of the Marietta City Council roll call. Will Madam City Clerk please do the roll call to determination of a quorum?
Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Councilmember Lavelle.
Here.
Councilmember Holliday.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stone.
Here.
Mayor DeForest.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Would you please go over the closed session agenda for tonight?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'd like to note for the record there are no public comments on closed session items. As listed on the agenda, the City Council will meet in closed session on one item, CS 1, Conference with Legal Counsel: Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Paragraph 2D of Section 54956.9, One Potential Case.
Thank you so much. And with that, we are going into recess into closed session. We will reconvene at 6:00 PM for the regular meeting. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Marietta City Council meeting, November 7th. We're reconvening from our closed session. Announcements of closed session action items, Madam City Attorney, are there any reportable actions tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session with one item regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9. The council was briefed, no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam City Attorney. Moving on to roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Here.
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 All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the pledge allegiance and invocation, I've asked Pastor Wyatt Staggers from the Bridge Church to lead us in the pledge of allegiance as well as our invocation tonight. Welcome, sir. Thank you for being here.
And over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now I will lead you in the invocation. God, we thank you so much for moments like these, Lord, where we get to gather as a city council and as a group, Lord, with the vision ahead of us, knowing, Lord, that you want to do so many things with this city, God. Lord, we give it all to you within this moment. God, we're so thankful that you are a sovereign God, that you hold all things in your hands, as it says in Hebrews 1:3, that you hold everything, the universe, all of the things inside of God and the whole creation, Lord, just by the power of your word. And so, God, we come before you, Lord, with humility on our hearts, Lord, understanding that you want to do so much more inside of this meeting, God, than just talk about the plans and the vision that are ahead of us. Lord, I pray that when decisions are made, that they are made with peace, they are made with your wisdom, Lord. God, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your peace, we ask for your joy to be over this place, God. Lord, and at the end of it all, Jesus, we just pray that you would have all the glory and all the honor moving forward as a city, God. Every single decision, every word that is said, and everything that we move forward with, God, will be made with you in mind and you at the center. God, we love you for this day, and we love you for these moments. Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Pastor Staggers, once again from the Bridge Church. Thank you for being here tonight, sir. All right, moving on to presentations. Tonight, I understand Jill Eaton is in the house. Executive Director of the Inland Empire Las Vegas Chapter is here to say a few words. She is the executive director of Susan Coman Empire More Than Pink Walk. If you could move on up to the podium, we'd love to have you. Welcome, girls in pink.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. We're super excited to be here. We wanted to come down tonight to thank the city of Marietta, the city council, and you, the mayor, for your guys' support for the walk in October, on October the 8th at Town Square Park. Here's just a few of the pictures. We have 3,000, but the file is too large to transfer, so we narrowed it down to a few here. We had over 2,500 registered participants, more than 4,000 people on site. It was, and we're hoping to have it bigger next year. Sunday, October the 13th, I'm working with Laura on the date. Not to just, you know, put that little pitch out there. But we also came, we're very close to reaching our goal. Right now, we're at $183,000. Our goal is 200,000, so we're still accepting donations, so we know we're going to hit that goal, so we're excited about that. But it was a remarkable day. I mean, there was just so many stories to share, so many pictures in that, in that video, that I could talk about personal experiences. Love this one of you guys, I'll share that so you guys can have that on everything that you do. And it was just, it was, it was really remarkable. Kelly from K-Frog was there. ABC did a fantastic coverage of showing everything leading up to the walk and also the day of by interviewing both our survivor, Kara Adams, and also Patty, Patty Calderon, who is living with metastatic disease and just has a phenomenal story. It was truly a blessing to see everyone there. There's another survivor in one of these pictures, and she's 20-plus years, and there's Mesa High School, which I think is awesome. But she's 20-plus years. It was her first time coming to the walk. She just lost her husband five weeks before this, and so she wasn't going to make it, and she wasn't going to come out. But you'll see her, she'll come up here, she's got a cute little hat on. But anyways, not her, there's another one. But, but we love her, but we love her. She's in, right there. So she, there she is, right there. So she had just lost her husband, has never been to one of the walks without her husband. And so, we were super excited to connect her with some other survivors so that she can stay in touch with them. So it's just, I mean, so many stories like that. I mean, it is what it's, it's a highlight for my, for the whole entire year. I enjoy it. Leading up to is crazy, but all the way up on walk day, then it's awesome, and then the next day afterwards, right? It's like having a kid, right? You're like, oh, this is great. And then you're like, oh, okay, this is awesome now. But the, but the birth is kind of scary. Anyways, I just wanted to say thank you. We have some photos we want to take with you. We have a certificate of appreciation that we would love to have all of you down here. And then we have some little, some little gifts, and I'm not sure if I can go ahead and hand them out now, but scarves for ladies and Coman ties for gentlemen. Is that okay?
We will come.
Awesome.
We will come down.
And I'm hoping to get some pictures.
We'll come down and take a picture. We'd love to.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes, we want them to hold stuff.
And then we'll give them, and then we'll give them their goodies in just a second.
Then.
Or you could switch, would you want to go only just so it reads?
Got it.
There you go. That's perfect. And you can be right by the mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Moving on to a proclamation. Joanne Servins, Police Service Technician, I would like to invite Chief Conrad and Joanne Servins to come up forward, please.
She was hoping to get out of coming up here, but that's not going to happen. So I'll start. I have a proclamation for you, and I also have something on behalf of the police department to read to you, and also a plaque for you. I will say, last week, we took Joanne to lunch. Joanne's a 34-year city employee, which is quite remarkable. Go ahead, you guys can applaud. She, she's one of the few, maybe a handful of employees that have a 30-year pin. And we took her to lunch last week. I think the entire detective bureau was there. My property and evidence employee was there, and some other command staff. We filled the restaurant, and it was my pleasure to purchase lunch for you and to hear what everybody had to say about you. You're such a valued employee. Also speak on behalf of the fire department and Chief Malloy because you spent a lot of time there. So with that, give me a little bit to read something to you. So, Joanne Servins, city ID number 105. Marietta Police Department and the city of Marietta is pleased to announce the retirement of Police Service Technician II, Joanne Servin, who has dedicated her career to serving our community for over 34 years. A native of Marietta, Joanne's service to the city of Marietta began at the age of 16, when she became a volunteer firefighter with the Marietta Fire District. She held this role for eight years, demonstrated her early commitment to public service. In 1989, Joanne was hired by the Marietta Fire District, which later evolved into the Marietta Fire and Rescue. As a receptionist, office assistant, throughout her tenure with fire, Joanne's dedication and contributions led to her promotion to Secretary and Administrative Secretary. In 2000, I think we got it narrowed down to 11, right? There's some debate on that. But I think it's 2011, Joanne made the transition to the police department, where she faithfully served, has served us for the past 12 years. During her time with Marietta PD, Joanne fulfilled roles as Secretary and the Assistant to the Detective Bureau Lieutenant, and as a Police Service Technician II specializing in records, in the Records Division, and most recently in the Detective Bureau. She has been an invaluable member of our team and has even taken on the role of the National Night Out Coordinator. You were the first coordinator for National Night Out. And volunteered countless hours with the Marietta Police Department Baker-to-Vegas Relay Team. It should be known, Joanne served as the person that catches the runner, so all 20 runners have to be caught, and the next runner has to be prepared to take off. I asked Joanne, hey, how many people did that role with you? And she said, just me. So she actually jumped each leg. And you did that. We think you have seven mugs and four additional years, so 11 years straight she did that job. So very difficult job, and she will continue to do that for us because she's promised me she's going to come back as a police department volunteer. As Joanne embarks on a well-deserved retirement, her plans include spending quality time with her family. We extend our warmest wishes to Joanne as she begins this new chapter, and thank her for her dedicated service. We wish her the very best in her retirement. You will continue to be a part of our police department family. So with that, now we get to get to the really official stuff like the "here ye" and, you know, whereas. So whereas Joanne Servin first began her career with the city of Marietta in the fire department, where she worked 22 years before transferring to the Marietta Police Department in 2011. And whereas Joanne Servin has four children, Miranda, David, Rebecca, and Courtney, and two beloved dogs, Bailey and Finley. And whereas Joanne Servin is not, when she is not volunteering, she enjoys spending time with family, kayaking, hiking, and camping. And it should be noted that she has taught probably the majority of the police officers, boys and girls, to drive because she's also a driving instructor in her spare time. Whereas after 30 years of commitment in the realm of public safety and public service with the city of Marietta, Joanne Servin will always be a part of the Marietta Police Department family and the city of Marietta. And whereas, one of Joanne's favorite quotes is this, "The past cannot be changed, the future is yet in your power." And so, we congratulate you, Joanne Servin, on your retirement, and we wish you the best of luck in all future endeavors. And Mayor DeForest, would you like to come down? And council, if you'd like to say a few words?
I was thinking, wow, Marietta is 32 years old. You were here before Marietta was here, so. Thank you for your dedication and love to our city, and you will be missed, but I have a feeling that you'll be close to the police department because he's not letting you go far. So I look forward to seeing you as a volunteer. And I thank you so much for your service. Enjoy, and God bless you in retirement. And thank you so much.
Just a quick congratulations for your dedication to Marietta, and we wish you nothing but health and best wishes in your retirement.
I just want to say thank you to Chief Conrad. It's been a pleasure working for you guys, and I will miss my detective crew immensely.
Congratulations, and thank you again. All right, moving on to approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda, Madam City Clerk?
Seeing none, Madam Mayor.
May I call for a motion in a second?
I don't have a second, Madam Mayor.
We are having some technical difficulties here. Again.
We got it. We got Councilmember Holliday and Mayor Protem Stone.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to call for the vote.
Oh, there we go. Thank you so much. We are in business now.
Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
Thank you so much. Before we go on to city manager updates, I have something very exciting to announce. We're going to put it right here before we allow her to hold it while we take a picture. But our city manager, Kim Summers, was recently selected as this year's Municipal Management Association of Southern California President's Award recipient. The President's Award is presented to a chief executive officer or a principal assistant who has made an outstanding or sustained contribution to the public sector and has supported the mission of MMASC by creating opportunities to further the development of individuals advancing within the public sector. Kim Summers was selected as the 2023 President's Award winner due to her involvement with the association and a number of substantial roles over the course of her career. She has been a mentor and an inspiration to many people throughout the local government profession, and has had many significant impacts on the careers of many MMASC members. This year, the city council would like to congratulate Kim as a President's Award. And we are so proud of our city manager, Kim Summers, for her vision and regional thinking. This award was her mentoring, for her mentoring and thinking to the future of city government. We are very proud of our city manager and her leadership in Marietta and beyond. So we'd like to take a picture with our city manager. All right, I'll let our city manager have her seat before I ask her for her administrative update.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
You're very welcome.
So as typical of the week before Veterans Day, we have our Field of Honor that has been placed in the park behind City Hall. It kicked off last Saturday, and we have over 2,023 flags out there, so we invite everyone to come and look at that. We also will be kicking off our Veterans Day Parade at 10:00 AM on Saturday, November 11th. And a little bit different this year, following the parade, we'll be dedicating the Vietnam Memorial, which has recently been completed, followed by a concert. And I'm told, free hot dogs? I'm not sure we want to tell everyone, but they're free hot dogs. So we invite everyone to come down. There's more information about the activities this week on the city website, and I believe there are some flyers in the lobby. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, moving on to our governing board commission and committee reports. Governing body reports, opportunity for the city council to provide a brief report on conferences, seminars, commissions, committees, and/or board meetings in attendance. Reports shall not exceed three minutes. Councilmember Warren, would you like to start us off?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you. On the 26th of October, I had the honor of driving to Riverside for our mayor. I really only go for the cookies, I got to tell you. RTA gives out great cookies. And you can see on my report that there were some updates that I thought were very important. But the one I wanted to really highlight is the shuttle for soldiers, a 501(c)(3) which began operations on October 2nd. Serves the veteran community by providing modified transportation for those that need it most. If you know of a veteran that does need some assistance in getting around, please reach out to our RTA because they really are here to help. And that was, to me, that was just a wonderful new program that they've instilled, and I just really like that. And then on the 29th, along with my fellow council persons, I attended a joint special meeting with city council and our planning commission. Mayor, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Lavelle.
I have no updates. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended yesterday both the RCA Riverside Regional Conservation Authority and WRCOG, which is the Western Riverside Council of Governments. The Riverside, or excuse me, the Regional Conservation Authority, the director and mayor is retiring next month. So that was the biggest news out of yesterday's meeting, and I regretfully missed the veterans' lunch on Monday to go attend that meeting where they did absolutely nothing. I didn't get cookies either, no. And then at WRCOG, the biggest topic of discussion is something called VMT. It's Vehicles Miles Traveled. And I'm sure some of you have heard that. The state has been looking at creating a new tax for vehicles miles traveled because they know that if everyone buys electric vehicle, then they will have no gas tax revenue. So they have to come up with something else. Of course, they're not going to get rid of the gas tax and replace it. They're probably going to try and do both. But in 2020, July of 2020, they did pass a law that said new development projects must mitigate for the vehicle miles traveled that they increase. And one of the things that the state has decided is that when you create a new road or improve an existing road, you're creating more vehicle miles traveled. And I said, how does that work? And the answer was, the state has decided if you make a better road, you induce people to drive more. I don't agree with this. All the studies don't show that, but that's where we are. And so, it may impact things like our Keller Road Interchange we're working on. And so, we're, we're working diligently to come up with solutions for that problem. And that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Holliday, Mayor Protem Stone.
Thank you, Mayor. I hosted the Southwest Elected Women's Collaborative. There is nothing to report at this time. I attended the joint special meeting with the Planning Commission and the city council as well. And then, our city manager, Kim Summers, our assistant city manager, Kristen Crane, and our mayor and I traveled to Washington DC to lobby for a plethora of infrastructure dollars, but most importantly is for the Keller Road. We are, we have a gap of $29 million to move forward with Keller Road. And Loma Linda Hospital will not expand, nor will Kaiser Hospital build their hospital until that interchange is facilitated. We had a phenomenal meeting with the Department of Transportation, who understood our issues here in Southwest Riverside County because both of them lived in either French Valley or Intemecula. So that was a gift to Marietta as they, as grant processing goes through, hopefully in the springtime, that they have the city of Marietta on their radar. In addition, we met with the White House staff, and that was very exciting. Our mayor did such a phenomenal job in addressing the issues that we are faced with here in Marietta, and she did a beautiful job in explaining the quality of life that we have here in Marietta. I just wanted to say thank you so much for your professionalism and all that you do for our community. So that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Mayor Protem Stone. And moving on to my governing board announcements, imagine that. I was at Washington DC with you as well. So I just have a little overview. I put some pictures here. It was kind of a stellar time. They were picking the speaker, which was really interesting to watch what was happening. And it did interfere with a few of our meetings with our two councilmen, or our two congressmen, Isa and Calvert, but they were great sports, and we actually got to meet with them in the hallway. So with that said, thank you to our city manager, Kim Summers, Kristen Crane, and Mayor Protem Stone for an amazing opportunity to talk about all things Marietta. Our first meeting was to echo with the U.S. Department of Transportation, Office of the Secretary. We discussed Keller Road interchanges and the public safety issues surrounding that. Our next meeting was with the Federal Emergency Management, or FEMA. We discussed wildfire risk in our region. We discussed management's needs for fire and flooding. That was a very interesting meeting, and hopefully some things will come forward from that. We did have a great meeting with the U.S. Department of Justice. There, we discussed the need for a regional training center and the grants available through the COPS program. They did tell us there was 56 grants available, and they do have several grants that will pay for a percentage of a police officer's salary for up to two years. And we also discussed and reminded that as our mobile command unit, which is on this year's appropriation comes through, that don't forget us, and that we definitely want that to come to fruition for the city of Marietta. We visited Ken Calvert and Darrell Isa. Both are congressmen. We talked a lot about the regional training center, as well as the importance of Keller Road Interchange. We also thanked Calvert for a homeless grant program. We also discussed issues with fish and wildlife on a regional level. So we're hoping to get maybe some regional help with some of the things that we're having issues with going through environmentals in the future. We thanked Isa's staff as well for putting appropriation or earmarking for our mobile command station of 900 million, or nine, oh, 900 million, excuse me, $900,000. Getting excited there. They throw the dollars around quite crazy. We did also meet with Officer, Office Senator Alex Padilla. We discussed with his staff We discussed with his staff Keller Road and regional training as well. They were very receptive, and they did not know where Marietta was. So that was, they were all Northern California, so it was fun to introduce what Marietta was in our Southern California vibe. We also met with the White House, as Mayor Protem mentioned. That was with the, in Intergovernment Affairs. Special Assistant to the President Stephanie Sykes and Isabella Hasset were very engaging and very interested in what Marietta had to offer. We talked to them about who we were as a city and why is it so important for them to know who Marietta is as the grants or appropriations come through. They know about it on the White House level as well. So also, it has been so nice. I've been contacted by Stephanie Sykes and two other departments, Department of Justice as well, to get some information from the city of Marietta to be spotlighted. And I will say that Simpson was up there. So, and those of you who don't know, Simpson is our therapy dog. Our, what is his official title? He's our support canine. Yes, and he's very cute. So anyway, sorry to go on and on. The pictures there are up. We did get a very, we were busy. We were doing five to eight meetings a day. We did not waste, no grass was grown under our foot. We had a very late night tour of some of the beautiful memorials, and this is the one that I thought was riveting, was the Korean War. You could see the people's faces, but you can see that online if you so look. Thank you so much for the opportunity to go and represent the city. My colleague, Mayor Protem Stone, was incredibly supportive and there through the whole entire, every meeting, even though we were freezing and our feet were killing us. But it was amazing to do over 30,000 steps that one day alone. So it was great, great fun. So moving on to public comments, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Any person may address the governing bodies on any subject pertaining to city business. Normally, no action may be considered or taken by the governing bodies on any matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Shane DeLisi.
Welcome, Shane.
Hi, thank you. Privilege to be before you guys again. Make this brief. You guys know my heart. I know your heart as well, at least in some ways. But hello to our Marietta City Council, Mayor Protem, and Mayor Dr. Lisa DeForest. And been here in Marietta for 17 years, a little over, and I was able to speak to you guys about three weeks ago, and thank you for hearing my heart tonight for the unborn. It's been one month since Hamas terrorists executed a brutal attack on Israeli civilians. They attacked and murdered men, women, and elderly. They handicapped and brutally murdered babies. We all know this. Testimonies from this massacre have been shared that babies were put into ovens and chopped to pieces and murdered right in front of parents. You and I agree that this is extreme evil. The last time I was here, I participated in the candlelight vigil you held in the support of Israel. I'm grateful for that. It was a great time together. I'm so proud of our city for supporting the Jewish people. I heard heartfelt comments from our city council and mayor and your concern for this murderous attack that happened a month ago. And I bring this up because I know that you have a heart for justice for those who have been murdered through this war in Israel. I share that with you. Your heart broke for the devastation they experienced, and you continue to have a heavy heart, I'm sure. My heart breaks for the millions of babies, human beings murdered in the womb every year. People have said in Israel that this was the worst attack on the Jewish people since the Holocaust. I agree. And we have a worse Holocaust happening in our country, state, and city. Planned Parenthood has been the organization responsible for the millions and millions of babies murdered throughout the years and is here in Marietta. We have a murder mill in our backyard. No matter what means are used to murder the unborn in the womb, by pill or by dismemberment, death is occurring each day and week in this building in our city. Human beings are valuable and worthy of protection because they are created by God. Each person has a right to life. I think we agree on that. In the womb and outside the womb, Proverbs 6:16 to 17 says, "There are six things that the Lord God, Yahweh, hates; seven that are an abomination to him, haughty eyes, a lying tongue, and hands that shed innocent blood." I know that some of you share the same convictions that I do. I would call you to make our city a sanctuary city for the unborn. Elsinore and Temecula have pregnancy resource centers. We need more, don't you agree? I hope so. Especially with Planned Parenthood coming here, I'm just kinda stoking the fire to say, what can we do more to offer life rather than death that has entered our city? You guys have allowed death to enter our city in some form. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Connie McConnell.
Thank you, and good evening. One of the main things I wanted to get up tonight to say was, thank you very much, and I think a lot of that goes to Kristin Crane, but the whole council and city manager. We're going to have decorations downtown. Yay! So we are very appreciative of that. And we hope next that we will be continuing, and I know you are, to work on a art in public places policy. And that's all I have to say. Come to the market next week on the 16th. See you then.
Thank you, Connie.
Amy Edworth.
Good evening, Marietta City Council. I'm Amy Edworth, your friendly neighborhood arts and history enthusiast, back again to talk about our shared dream, the Pearl Center for Creative Arts, or as we like to call it, the Marietta Train Project. Now, don't worry, I won't ask anyone to lay any tracks tonight. You've probably heard me talk about this before, the idea of an old train car alive with the stories, art, and history of our families and local heroes. Well, we've been chugging full steam ahead even without the train in place. Last year, we launched the Inside Out Marietta Project and turned our faces, our neighbors, our friends into a grand mosaic of large photo murals. We literally put our faces on the map, and not just any map, but the global art map. Now that's something to brag about at the next neighborhood barbecue. Working with our local historical society has been like unearthing treasure. From painting the greetings from historic Marietta mural to bringing the Lakeman House tales back to life, we've been sparking interest in our roots like never before. And let's not forget about our monthly genealogy meetups. They're like many time travel sessions, diving into our shared past. But don't worry, no flex capacitors or DeLoreans required. We've been blending history and art in the most fun ways, like guiding third graders through charcoal art lessons while sharing stories of our town's legacy, or popping up at the Earth Day Festival in a Victorian-style dress made of, wait for it, Target bags and Amazon packaging. Who knew recycling could be so fashionable? We've also been committed to keeping our programs accessible because art and access to art should never come with a price tag. We've utilized spaces like our wonderful library, turning them into creative playgrounds. Oh, and remember Ray Bazanson, our local legend of Ray's Cafe? We honored him by donating a custom painted historic rocking chair to the Marietta Educational Foundation for the Arts. Talk about rocking the arts scene. Our reach extends beyond Marietta. We've been supporting events at the Southern California Railway Museum in Paris and the Marchfield Museum. We're like the friendly arts ambassadors of Marietta. But the highlight of the year was our first annual Victorian steampunk tea party. It was like stepping into a time machine, but instead of going back in time, we celebrated who we are now and what we're building together. So what's next for us? Join us at Marietta Market Nights on December 21st for the reveal of our very own community photo project. We've got 117 monochromatic snapshots depicting downtown life, all taken by our very own community members, like a yearbook of our own town without the awkward school photos but full of surprises. So there you have it. We're not just talking about the arts, we're living it, breathing it, and sharing it. The Marietta Train Project is more than just a dream, it's our pathway to a vibrant, interconnected future, and with your support, we can turn this dream into a reality. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Amy.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you so much, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to the consent calendar, approval of items 1 through 15. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and may be enacted by one motion and vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless specific items are removed from the consent calendar for separate motions. Are there any requests from any of the council to pull any of the consent calendar items for discussion or abstention? Madam City Clerk, are there any members of the public requesting to speak on a consent calendar item?
None.
Thank you. We call for a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Kimberly's gonna look behind to find out if there's... I did get a motion from Councilmember Warren. There we go. I got a second from Councilmember Lavelle.
Yeah, so, no, don't, we already did it.
Oh, okay.
And then we're gonna call for the vote. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0.
All right, thank you. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Was it something we said?
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you, yes. All right, moving on to a discussion.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I apologize. I am supposed to read something on what was just approved. The approval included conducting the second reading by title only and with further reading waived. Adopt Ordinance 598-23 entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Marietta, amending Title 16 of the Marietta Municipal Code to revise the city's development code to adopt electric vehicle charging and housing implementation standards related to Section 16.0810, 16.0820, 16.3440, 16.44115, 16.44200, 16.52040, and 16.73050. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Moving on to discussion, lease agreement and site preparation costs for annexed space for City Hall. Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Kristin Crane, Assistant City Manager, and with me this evening is Management Analyst Isaac Bravo from the City Manager's Office, as well as Martha Simoniego, Management Analyst in Economic Development, so team effort pulling this item together. So item 16 on your agenda pertains to a proposal to lease office space to provide additional office space to augment our City Hall capacity. Presently, City Hall contains workspaces for approximately 120 employees. We completed an interior remodel of this facility earlier this year, which in addition to some necessary refurbishment after 15 years since the facility was originally built, also yielded about 12 more workspaces. But over the past year or so, with the city council's approval, the city has been adding positions in various departments to keep up with the service demands of our city and the needs that coincide with a rapidly growing city population and years of having deferred additional positions for a variety of reasons. So with that said, we have reached our capacity of City Hall and are recommending that the city council enter a six-year lease for about 4,900 square feet of office space across the street in the commercial center from City Hall that would house up to 21 employees. The proposal for this space is that it would house staff from our Community Services Department and the Human Resources and Risk Management Divisions of the Administrative Services Department, thus availing some much-needed office space within City Hall that would then accommodate some team members, new team members from other work groups. Additionally, currently, the Community Services Department staff members that would be moving into this space, some of them are housed here, but others of them are spread out among other city facilities, so this would also provide some much-needed new efficiency in terms of their work group being able to be together in one, in one space and give productivity benefits. So the agenda item that you have describes the terms of the proposed lease, what the ongoing cost of the lease would be, as well as the one-time cost to prepare the site and for some of the furnishings and equipment that we would need to purchase. The lease is structured to be for six years, with two options to extend for an additional five years each. We do have a project on the city's CIP list to look at constructing in addition to this facility or a secondary building, but we are not actively working on that project at this time, and that would take many years to bring to fruition at the time that we would be actively working on it. Realistically, the city's population is projected to grow to about 140,000 people, and the current City Hall was constructed in the early 2000s when the population was much smaller. And since then, we've seen explosive growth. So with that, our staffing structure needs to grow along to coincide, to continue to provide the staffing services associated with that population growth. So additionally, for example, when we have increased population and we have, that translates into additional frontline employees like firefighters, police officers, but there's also a behind-the-scenes need on the backend for employees to support that as well. So human resources, IT, finance, and so forth to support that growth. So the cost for the lease for one year, for your first year, is about $111,000, plus the cost of the common area operating expenses, which amount to about $55,000 a year, and then the cost of utilities, which is about $68,000 per year. And then in future years, there would be a CPI escalator. So over the course of the six-year lease, cumulatively, all of those costs combined, it's expected to cost about $1.5 million. In addition, there are some one-time costs for some minimal tenant improvements, as well as the furnishings, the security, equipment, the network cabling, and so forth. And together, all of those costs amount to about $470,000, which includes a 10% contingency. So a high-level overview of what the site improvements will include. Again, we have some light tenant improvements that need to happen, paint, carpet, cleaning, et cetera. Also, installing the IT network cabling and then furnishing. We will have 21 workspaces, 16 workstations cubicle-style, and then five offices, as well as a conference room and some other collaborative workspace. So process-wise, we have a goal of moving into the space in late January, early February, and tonight's action is a critical milestone to help us with meeting that timeline. I will say that we did explore several alternatives for temporary office space, and this option shaped up to be the most cost-effective option, as well as the most efficient in terms of the space that we would gain, proximity to City Hall, and then just the time to bring it to fruition as well. We did also work with a real estate broker to review the lease and to look at the pricing structure for that and determine that it is consistent with what the fair market rate would be for a commercial space for this type of property. At the time the agenda was published, there were a few aspects of the lease that weren't related to terms like the length and value that were still being finalized, but at this point, as of today, those terms have been finalized, and the lease you have in your agenda packet is what we're expecting to be signing. So tonight, we're recommending that the city council authorize the city manager to approve the lease in the form that is approved by the city attorney, based on the terms that are included in your report. Additionally, we're also asking that the city council authorize the city manager to execute the necessary agreements for the purchase of the furniture and some of those other site improvements that I was mentioning, subject to us following the city's purchasing policy in order to identify all the vendors and so forth. The agenda report also identifies several budget adjustments that are needed associated with this, both to the capital improvement program for one-time costs and to the operating budget for the ongoing costs. And based on council approval, then, we would be continuing to work expeditiously to execute the lease, order the furniture, complete the site preparations, again with the goal of moving staff in as soon as late January or early February. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Does any of my colleagues have any questions?
I can't believe I figured it out. That's pretty good.
Very nice. That was very fast, too. Impressive.
I know this is quote-unquote supposed to be temporary, but is there a possibility this could be a longer term than the six, five, and five due to not building out City Hall as quickly or rapidly as we may need it?
Anything is possible. You know, I've worked in other places where sometimes temporary did turn into longer term, but I think that's gonna depend on conversations that we have with the council about the overall slate of projects and facilities and so forth, and what the needs are, and how the workforce changes as well.
And another question is, let's say that we... Another question is, let's say that we utilize this space for the first six years and maybe the next five, and then decide we don't know, we no longer need it, is there a clause in this agreement that you must put the facility back to its original state?
I can defer to my colleagues. I will say, we're not making any dramatic changes in terms of walls and changing the structure and so forth.
Yeah, the city is accepting the property and has its condition. There are some conditions that are outlined in the First Amendment of the agreement, but there is no requirement on the city to have to put it back in the same condition that we're receiving it in.
Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions at this time.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. My first thought when I first heard about the constraints of space in this current (cough) excuse me, building, just wanted to cross it off the list, the remote work option that possibly could solve some of the space constraints, has that been explored or is that not possible?
Okay, so one of the reasons that we thought this was such a great option is because it is temporary, and with the way changes are happening in the workplace with off-site capabilities, with different work schedules, we'd really like to see how that works out on our space needs. So at some point, we'll be coming back to talk to you about doing a space study analysis, but this kind of is a bridge, so it'll get us down the road a little bit to see what do we need to carry us through to build out. I don't know that any of us have a really clear answer right now, but we should in a couple of years.
And also, the, I think it was 21 employees this would house?
Twenty-one. There are 21 workspaces. We don't need all 21 on day one, but it'll have the capacity for that.
Being fully staffed, how many more employees would need a place, and would this accommodate everything as seen currently?
That's a good question. We're constantly looking at what our staff needs, and the number of staffing is always changing. I don't know, Kim, do you have a clear crystal ball on that piece?
We know that we're growing at a faster pace than we anticipated, and so this building definitely has reached its capacity, but we're also seeing that as well in our other facilities, our CSD facilities, our police station. So I would anticipate that we're going to have a use for this space even if we were to solve our issues here in City Hall. I believe that there are a number of employees who could utilize that space, and it is so convenient because it's just right across the street.
In my last comment, maybe a question, the lease rate, if my math is correct, it's about $1.90 a square foot for base rent. That seems below market, like a really decent deal?
Yeah, no, we're working with a broker on that. This is the fair market value. We're not getting any sort of benefit. We wanted to be clear on that. We didn't want the property owner to feel like they're doing the city a favor and then we have to do them a favor. This is the fair market value that the brokers come back with. So yeah, and you're right, it is $1.10 a square foot.
Dollar ten or dollar ninety?
Dollar ninety.
Okay.
Sorry, dollar ninety.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. I have a couple of questions. Is it currently empty?
Yes.
It is currently empty, so we could start immediately?
As soon as our lease is signed?
Yeah, as soon as the lease is signed and we take possession of the building, we can start doing. There are some modifications that we are requiring. There's a demising wall because we are only taking two units of the three units there, just for safety and for security, but after those improvements are done, we will be able to move full steam ahead.
And could you tell me what department that you plan on putting in there?
Yes, so Community Services Department staff, so that would be Brian Ambrose and some of the other team members from Community Services, and then Human Resources and the Risk Management staff as well.
So that'll allow them to all finally be in one spot and together?
With the Community Services staff that are spread, several of them are spread different locations, yes.
Okay, fantastic. And looking at the picture architecturally, we kind of got lucky. It does look a little bit like City Hall, too, you know, so it's not that much of an overreach. And will we do signage as well on the outside of the building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of my questions. Thank you so much. I see no other questions from up here, so could I call for a motion and a second? No public comments.
I just want to note for the record, zero public comments.
No public comments.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilmember Holliday and a second from Councilmember Lavelle. Call for the vote, Mayor.
All right, could everybody vote?
Motion carries unanimously, five zero.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Public Safety Training Facility Architectural Design Service Agreement Award. Staff? A staff of one. Oh, there's more coming, okay. That's right.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. This item is to recommend awarding an agreement for architectural services for proposed public safety training facility. I had my button on, but I guess my mic wasn't on.
They have the power, Ivan, so you know.
Since the city first incorporated, Marietta Fire and Rescue and Marietta PD have utilized makeshift facilities for training purposes. While those facilities have served their purpose for several years, now that the city has an estimated population of about 115,000 with a projected population of approximately 150,000, those facilities are simply no longer adequate. For example, I'll point out a couple of things just on this slide. For live-fire training, Marietta Fire and Rescue currently uses two stacked C cargo containers for that purpose. I'll get into what is required here in the next slide. And our police department currently travels to Paula to an outdoor range for required weapons qualifications on a regular basis. Just to note, from a fire perspective, the insurance service office currently requires a four-story training tower for live-fire training, so you can see that our current facility is just a little bit inadequate for that. And then to reiterate, we are sending officers out of the city some distance to take care of their regular weapons qualifications. The proposed facility would substantially improve the training conditions for both Marietta Fire and Rescue and Marietta Police Department and include a number of elements. Some of the elements are on this slide, but I'll walk you through a few more. Classrooms for instruction and training purposes, the four-story fire tower, within that, a Class A burn room, excuse me, vehicle extrication area for training for fire, same thing would be a technical rescue area, residential and roof props, and if you have questions, I'll pause here for just a second. If you have questions on what some of these elements are, I would direct you to Fire Chief Malloy, who's sitting immediately to my right, and Police Chief Conrad, who's sitting a little further on the right. It would also include a 50-yard indoor firing range, ammunition training building, defensive tactics training room, SWAT equipment storage, a K-9 training area, and locker rooms. So you can see that the facility would be quite a bit different from what we currently have today. The proposed location for the public safety training facility is at the current Public Works Yard. If the training facility is ultimately constructed, the Public Works Yard would be relocated, and staff is currently reviewing future potential locations for that yard if, again, we eventually construct the public safety training facility. For those of you that aren't aware, the current Public Works Yard is, as you can see on a slide, at FIG and Adams. Jefferson would be just off the slide to the left. Staff published a request for proposals for architectural services on June 27th of this year. Six firms submitted proposals in response to the RFP, and three of those were selected as finalists. The review panel consisted of Chief Malloy, Police Captain Henry, Public Works and Engineering Director Bob Maling, and myself. And after interviewing the three finalists, I will let you know that the panel was unanimous in their determination to recommend selecting Tenover Studio plus G2 Solutions. There are representatives from those two firms here with us in chambers today. The primary reason for selecting that firm over the others was the experience that they had in designing and providing construction administration services to combined facilities. There are a number of firms that have experience in police facilities or in fire facilities. It was a little bit more difficult to find firms with extensive experience in combined facilities because there's a lot of efficiency that can be obtained when we construct a facility for both police and fire. Some of the amenities that I mentioned earlier can be used by both agencies. I should also note that the RFP contained a provision, as does the agreement, that includes the ability for the city to suspend work at the completion of schematic drawings, and the reason for that, without going into a lot of detail, would be to allow the city to coordinate with potential other users. So with that, staff recommends that your council award an agreement for architectural design services for a public safety training facility to Tenover Studio, amend the CIP budget as described in the agenda report, and authorize the use of Measure T operating reserve also as described in the agenda report. We're available for any questions that your council may have, and that concludes staff's report.
Thank you for that fantastic report. Nice to see this come forward. I remember talking about it when I was running for council, so three years to get this far. I love how fast government goes. So I'll call Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you again, Mayor. Very exciting, this coming here already, and it's really cool to see that finally in front of us. The training facility, will it have a gym for you guys for exercise? You know, I know the PD has an actual CrossFit affiliate, but like, is there plans for that to be part of that?
Councilmember Lavelle, yes.
Awesome, thank you. And then, the firing range, would that be available for public at all, something like Ren's Ranch or Paula does currently?
At this point in time, we don't anticipate that. That's a... Once a facility is constructed, that's something we could look at, but not at this time.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So for police, will this new facility, obviously we're just going into design, but will it eliminate completely our need to go to other facilities?
I don't think I could say would completely eliminate it, but it would... We would be shooting here locally instead of traveling out of the county. We could handle a lot of our training here in the city as opposed to going to Ben Clark. Both of those drives can be 45 minutes to an hour. Many times, they could be over an hour, depending on the time of the day, so I can't say all of our training would be here in Marietta, but I'd say the majority of it would, yes.
Do you have an idea of what training might not be able to be accomplished locally?
There's some really specialized training that our officers and detectives go to that either is out of state or definitely out of the county, so those things, and they're kind of one-off trainings that are held in that particular city. Many times, it's a large city, but your everyday perishable skill training, I feel very comfortable saying that would all be handled here in Marietta.
Including long gun?
Long gun will have to go down to Paula, and that's... Long gun is unique because when we're using that weapon system, for the most part, we are outdoors anyway, so your snipers actually want to have the elements of outdoors and not shoot a long gun indoors. That also was reinforced with us when we visited Carlsbad PD. They're not quite pleased with their 100-yard range. If they could do it all over again, they'd move it to a 50. They obviously have a 50, but they didn't need to build a 100.
Understood. Okay, appreciate that. And for the Fire Department, do you see any need for outside training after this facility would be built?
My answer is much like Chief Conrad's in that probably over 90% of our training could be done at the training facility, but there is specialized training that we do in the fire service, like swift water rescue, where we actually need to put our rescuers in water that's moving. We're not going to build a swift water rescue into this.
We're not building a river?
No. We go to March Air Reserve Base every year to do live training on putting out aircraft fires, so there's going to be training opportunities like that that go outside of our city, but with building a facility that has classrooms, a lot of the classes that we send our personnel to, we'll be able to bring instructors in and host them here, and also bring in other firefighters from other agencies to take their classes in our city, and so that's something that we're excited to be able to bring in here as well. And then our day-to-day required training that we have to do, all of it can be done here in the city at this training facility.
Excellent. And I know shortly after I got elected, I reached out to both the chiefs and asked for a rough estimate of cost that would be saved, ongoing annual cost that would be saved if we had this public safety training center. Do you recall those numbers? I can share them if you don't.
I'm sorry, I don't have it.
Each of you said it would be about $50,000 a year that we would save by having the public safety training center here. I just wanted to bring that out for the public. I know it's an estimate. I said I wasn't going to hold you to it, and I'm not, but obviously there are some savings by not having people drive 45 minutes to go to Ben Clark or down to Paula, and likewise with fire as well. I had one more question, but it eludes me at the moment, so I'll come back.
Well, I could come back to you.
Thank you.
Could you elaborate a little bit on where our current training facility is? For fire?
For the Fire Department, our current training facility, you can almost see from here, it's behind our fire admin in Station One. It's the stacked C containers, and we have some other props there as well. We do have a roof prop there behind the facility. It's an interesting place to do any live-fire training because it's next to a school, and when we do any live-fire training, everybody in our downtown area calls and says that we have a fire somewhere close, so we have to be very selective when we do that and do notifications. One of the things about this training center is the area we chose is an industrial area because you don't have that component of the public that's there, so you have a better opportunity to do the live-fire training and not have as many people call 911, not knowing what it is, and it will also be an advanced system that does a little bit of air handling with the live-fire training, so it doesn't put out as much smoke with the systems we would be looking to put in.
All right. Can you elaborate on the total cost and the phases? Would the cost be in phases? You said it could pause after we had some type of schematics, or could you elaborate on that a little bit?
Sure, Mayor. This is obviously just for the architectural design component. We've built a break or a pause in after schematic designs. It's difficult to let people know what we have envisioned without anything in our hands, and so the schematic designs will provide that for us and the ability to show other potential users of the training facility. So that's the reason that we've built that in, so that we actually can have some materials that we can provide them and have them share in the vision with us. So if we get past that phase, then the rest of the construction documents, design development construction documents, could potentially be completed, or it's actually, the schedule includes those being completed. I'm going to pull this from memory, about July-ish of next year. It could be a couple of months off, but somewhere in that.
It could be a couple of months off, but somewhere in that, somewhere in that range. The total cost of architectural services is 2.5 million. Typically, construction, or excuse me, architectural cost is approximately 10%. That's not a hard and fast rule, but we anticipate a cost for this facility to be around 25 million. The facility, if it is constructed, could certainly be constructed in phases, so we don't have to do all of that all at once. And that's something that we would work through with the architectural team and Chief Conrad and Chief Malloy.
Thank you so much. I think that that's vitally important to know, that we do have a stop and that we're not going all the way through with the design when we don't have the facilities to build it as of yet, right? So, thank you so much for putting it in phases and for that explanation. So, I, just being in Washington DC talking so much about this, I know that we hit cord several times talking about it being on one side of preschool and across the street from a school, so elementary school. So, I think that that right there makes us realize that is in the wrong spot, and we definitely need to get that moved. So, thank you so much. So, any other council member questions, comments? Oh, sorry, Councilmember Warren.
No problem. I do have a couple of questions. Is this only going to be for Marietta PD and fire, or will there be an element into this project down the road for other agencies to utilize our facility at a cost?
I'll speak in terms of law enforcement, so we collaborate, as you know, with our partner agencies from both San Diego County and our county. So we would, they would be training at this facility. There wouldn't be a charge for that, but that's kind of the economy of scale that we go to their facilities, they go to ours, and the reality is there is no facility in Southwest Riverside County. So, I'd imagine everyone from CHP, RSO, Border Patrol, Menifee PD, Hemet PD, probably get Corona up here or down here from time to time, we would get a variety of different agencies in the facility.
And that would make for a stronger region, correct?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Absolutely. Also, Chief Malloy, the four-story tower, that's specifically put in place because to accommodate not only the new multi-units that we have coming into town, but the hotels that right now are very difficult to get to at the top floor level, is that correct?
Correct. The four-story tower accomplishes a few things. One is that for ISO, you need to train at a facility that has a four-story tower to get full training credit for your ISO rating. So that will help us improve our ISO as a fire department for the city. The other is that the tower that we designed, it's actually multi-faced, so each face of the tower would have a different scenario. For example, one side could look like apartments, the other side could look like a hotel, the other side could look like a commercial tilt-up. So, it's designed so we have different problems we have to solve and different training scenarios we can utilize. With one prop, one tower, also works exactly for PD the same way. We have different missions within the same community, so we want to build a training scenario that can work for both PD and fire. And to answer your question about partnerships, we have a lot of partnerships we're looking to bring with this within the fire department. We don't currently have a training JPA set up, but it's something we're looking for, and that design element would help us further that along.
Excellent. And my last question is, you said that there'll be classrooms included in this design. Would that be available for us to do some CPR and outreach to our public to come in and train for lifesaving measures and other measures in the community?
Absolutely. The classrooms are specifically designed to be an asset to the city, not just the fire and police departments, but classrooms for anything that we need to do within the city.
Thank you. This is wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I see Councilmember Holliday has remembered his question.
I did, and for my other colleagues' questions, I had a couple more. So you mentioned that you wouldn't be charging other police departments to come and train at this facility, and they currently don't charge us to train at theirs, correct?
There's, it depends on if it's a post-related class, and we go to Ben Clark, there is a certain charge for that, but the way, that's run by the county through state funding. The way I see it is just collaborating with the partners that we work with. So, as you know, we serve Hemet and Menifee with our SWAT team, so we serve over 300,000 people. And so that training is constantly taking place within the three cities. So it will, a lot of that training will move to this public safety training center, probably the vast majority of it, and I wouldn't charge Hemet and Menifee for that. There is a billing mechanism that comes out through posts in Sacramento, but that doesn't really apply with this.
Would there be a cost to the city for that additional training of outside agencies? Or would they be providing their own instructors and manning the facility? And I'm not talking about the electricity.
Yeah, they'll bring their own subject matter experts. There wouldn't really be, other than the hard costs of just the overhead to run the facility, of course, the city's going to have to absorb that.
Right.
I think the benefit much outweighs what the costs are. I will say too, one of my goals with the police department is to, and we've actually sent multiple classes up to Sacramento and become certified to train in these classes. That's why, for the most part, almost every week, there's a course being held at the police department, a post-certified course with agencies from all over Southern California. So, our actual police officers are teaching those courses, and then that allows my police officers to attend the courses free of charge. So those are outside companies that perhaps come in and we could use the facility perhaps for that, and there could be a reimbursement mechanism there with that private company. I haven't explored that, but we'd be open to that. We just, I don't envision us charging another police department to use the facility.
Understood. And Chief Malloy, same question. Do you see charging outside agencies to use a facility?
We have very similar situations with classrooms, say. If you have a classroom that you're going to have an instructor for, there's private agencies that do that instruction, we have state-certified instructors as well. Oftentimes what you do is if you allow the facility to be used, your own facility, then you get free spots in those classes. So it's an offset. We wouldn't have to pay to get the training that we're going to be giving our crews, it offsets in the class. As far as other fire departments, we have to explore those options. There's a lot of training JPAs that exist to, you know, and those costs to join that JPA would be something to cover. Equipment that you use during the training, a roof prop, for example, you have to build a roof, which you have to put plywood all over the roof, very expensive to do, and we get up there with our saws and we cut holes and explore different ways to ventilate fires. So something like that has a cost to it with those perishable goods. Training JPAs are designed so everyone contributes to that, so there's revenue to make sure that we're covering our training costs. And that's really how I see it working. With this, we will develop a business model for what it looks like and explore other options.
And Ivan, do you see any other additional sources of revenue from building this facility?
There could potentially be other revenue sources, although as of this particular point in time, it's premature to say, but we have had, I'll say we have had conversations with potential partners.
Okay. And if I understand it correctly, there are a lot of grants and programs that are available for dirt-ready projects. Is that correct?
There are grants for shovel-ready projects. How many grants specific to a public safety training facility? I could not answer that right now.
Okay, but if we got to the point of construction drawings, would this qualify as a shovel-ready project?
Yeah, the entitlement on this is very straightforward because of the zoning on the property, so this is, this is more, and will be, the city will be handling the entitlement. This is more preparation of the drawings and then issuance of building permits, so the ministerial side of things. So, short answer is yes.
I understand that. Yeah, so I want, if we get to the end of that process, then this would be, if there were public safety training grants available, this would be a shovel-ready product that would qualify for those. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday. All right, so seeing, do we have any public comments on this, Madam City Clerk?
Seeing none.
All right, fantastic. Then I will move on for a motion in a second. I have a motion in a second, and...
Motion very unanimously, 5-0.
5-0, fantastic. All right, moving on to governing board announcements. Governing board announcements is an opportunity for the council to provide miscellaneous reports and announcements. Announcements shall not exceed two minutes. The city clerk will use the computerized timer, and Member, Councilmember Cindy Warren, may you start us off.
I was, it's been very busy. When your two top council members, in my, Mayor and Mayor Potem, go to Washington DC, we get to do a lot more things, which has really been very fun. The one thing I will say, I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting on their luncheon in a celebration of the Chamber of Commerce Day. Thank you. It was nice to be there. Also, I attended the birthday celebration for Menifee along with my colleagues outdoors at the new stadium at the college, which is beautiful, I must tell you. And then Saturday right after that, and after attending a gala from Elvet, Mayor Potem, myself, and Ron Holliday participated in beautification cleanup day, and I do believe we packaged or picked up, between the volunteers and us, over 36 bags of trash on Jefferson and Marietta Hot Springs Road and Whitewood and Clinton Keith. So we got our hands dirty and we went out there and cleaned up our city. It was a lot of fun. I want to thank the chamber again for the coffee with the city. It was a lot of fun. We did have fun with that, didn't we, Mr. Holliday? And exciting to see the Clinton Keith Phase 3 extension project to Winchester. That ribbon cutting in the rain was exciting, and I just must tell you that to represent this city at my very first official capacity and for the mayor, and Mayor Potem was an honor, and I wanted to thank you for trusting me with that. And if you go through more pictures, I have been everywhere, everywhere in the city and outside of the city, but my most favorite part was being all off at our trunk-or-treat celebration. It was so much fun, and I don't know how many children were there and families, but it was a huge success. So thank you to Brian and your crew, the city and their crew, and all the departments that participated, and for Jennifer, Officer Jennifer, I don't know how to say her last name, is it Montoya?
Which one?
Anyway, she did a fabulous job, and I want to thank her for all her expertise. And look at the rest of the wonderful things, and the last item I have is our field of honor. I had the privilege of posting my husband's flag, and as emotional as that is, it makes me very proud to be the spouse of a Vietnam veteran. And with that, I will say, God bless America and God bless all of our veterans in all of the United States of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Lavelle.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of updates, things I attended. This is the, a picture of me at Temecula Valley Hospital talking about what we did with Charisolus and why we did it from the city's perspective. This was requested by NAMI, it's a National Alliance of Mental Health Institute. They were very curious and interested to know what we did and kind of where we were at in the process. I was accompanied by Mr. Brian Ambrose over there, who's been a crucial part of this rolling out. The night went well, we had a very positive response from everyone in attendance, some great questions, and some community members that it seemed they're going to be very receptive to having this type of resource deployed. Second, kind of to dovetail on Ms. Warren's comment, I was also at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Clinton Keith expansion. There's a picture with everyone there, all the dignitaries and traffic engineers that were involved over the last, I think 20 years is what they had referenced, yeah, a long time. And lastly, this was, you know, pretty exciting in my day job, we had this unveiling of augmented cancer services at Loma Linda right here in Marietta. Traditionally, we've had, in this city, you know, the San Diego Market, Orange County, Sammert, you know, the main house for Loma Linda, cancer services, but you had to drive far. So as you imagine, it's quite challenging for cancer patients to get in a car and drive an hour and a half and then come back after the treatment feeling nauseous and having procedures done. So, this is the start of something really great for everybody in the community to access close-to-home cancer services that they don't have to leave far from. And I may be biased, but we have a good program and good doctors to kind of receive those patients and ensure that Marietta has the best. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Lavelle. Councilmember Holliday.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not going to go through all the things I have, but I would like to highlight a couple. I did post on social media about our trash pickup that the three of us went on, and I said this is the first trash pickup, and I was immediately corrected by a longtime resident, said it's not the first, we did one in the 90s. So, from now on, I'm going to say it's the first in the last 20 years, and hopefully it'll be the first of, in the 90s, yes. Yes, I've been around that long. But hopefully this will be the first of several. I know we talked to our colleagues in Wildomar, and they said when they started theirs, it was only the two council members that showed up. We were worried that was going to be the case with us, but we had a good group that showed up, so we hope that we can grow from that. The second thing I wanted to highlight is I went to the trauma intervention programs, I think it was Heroes With Heart Award, and as the chief can attest to the TIP program, these are amazing people. These are people that sign up to go out 24/7 on their shift, could be 3:00 in the morning, could be 4:00 in the morning. Whenever they're called, if they're signed up to go, they will go out, whether it's a fatality from a car accident or murder, or whatever it is, whatever crisis somebody has. If a police officer determined that they could use a TIP volunteer, and this is not paid, this is entirely volunteer, they go out and they work with the person so that the police officers can do their job, instead of the police officers holding someone's hand, which, not that they can't, but they have work to do. And this volunteer steps in, holds hands, comforts, provides resources, and like I said, it can be any time of the night. So, this is an organization I just think is amazing, and they deserve a lot of credit. So, I'm happy to support them. And then the last thing I have is the Rotary's Al Volbrecht Chalk Walk, and I posted some pictures of the amazing artists that we have in Marietta that drew some of these pictures. The one with the soldier ended up getting the Best in Show.
Wow.
They're just some amazing artists that did some artwork there. Al Volbrecht, a city employee for many, many years, and he's no longer with us, but it's, and he was a Rotarian for a long time as well. So I'm grateful that Rotary has decided to name it after him, and he would be thrilled with what we're doing with it today. So if you get a chance, I think the art's still out there, Madam City Attorney? Yes? Yeah, so if you get a chance to go by there and take a look at some of those, the pictures don't do it justice. It's right out here at Town Square Amphitheater, right on the sidewalk, and that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Holliday, Mayor Potem still?
Thank you, Mayor. You can review all my meetings on our website, and the only thing that I'd like to comment on is we are doing our annual, or we are doing our peanut butter drive, and there is a box in the foyer that talks about collecting peanut butter. And the peanut butter is going to go to our food pantries in Marietta. And if you don't know why we're doing this peanut butter drive, it's because we're in partnership with Professional Women's Roundtable, who, over a decade ago, understood the recession and how our food pantries were empty. And one of the things that is wonderful about peanut butter is it's a great source of protein, and it does not have to be refrigerated. But some people have asked me, can they bring cashew butter or any other types of butter because there's a large amount of people that are allergic to peanut butter, and so yes, you can. So, please come and fill up the box in the foyer, please, so we can distribute those peanut butter items to our local food pantries. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And moving on to my governing board announcements, if you want to move to page five, you can read all the ones that, it's been busy. I think there's three pages of activities on top of the trunk-or-treat. Thank you to Marietta PD for putting that event on, and all of the city staff, including fire, and every department had a booth. It was amazing. We were frozen, hence, we were frozen by the end of the night too, so it was fantastic. And attended by so many kids, I've never given so much candy out in my life. And attended by so many kids, I've never given so much candy out in my life. And then if you want to move to page number 7, I attended the program announcement for Loma Linda University Medical Center. Thank you to Dr. O'Leary for helping one of my long-term friends that thought she had pancreatic cancer. It was nice that she got care very fast. And thank you to my colleague, John Lavell, for facilitating that introduction and allowing Loma Linda to help her navigate health care. Field of Honor lunch, the next page. Quarterly meeting with Supervisor Washington. Oh, Connie left. I put a picture of Connie in there as well, since she's always meeting us. That was fun. Market night is going strong, and I am seeing many friends down there that I've known from being on school board and buying some of the cute things they have. I attended Socktoberfest, which is at Oak Meadows Elementary, which is in my colleague Ron Holliday's district. We talked about Ron as well, and they're going to invite you to the next event. I think that included being slimed. I got out of that one. And Kate Sanchez had a fentanyl awareness town hall at Mesa High School, which was a fantastic event and brought a lot of community leaders together that disseminated a lot of information to everyone. And to end it, I will be hosting a forum to have your voices heard for a four-year university in our region to stop the brain drain. This will occur on November 13 at 9:00 AM. This will be the first meeting of the Southwest Riverside Higher Education Coalition. We will have our partner, Mount San Yuceno College. Roger Schultz will be speaking. From San Marcos, God For Gibbons will also be speaking. Once again, that's Monday, November 13 at 9:00 AM at the Temecula Campus, the San Yuceno, Mount San Yuceno Campus in Temecula. Please come. There's information all over social media, and I will be pushing that out as well. So looking forward to seeing all of you there. If you need to reach me, my email, as well as my personal cellphone number, is right there if you need to get ahold of me. Texting is better, since I seem to be in lots of meetings lately. All right, so thank you so much for listening to my 10 pages of governing board announcements. Who thought November would be so busy for all of us? Thank you to my colleagues as well for filling in the gap when Mayor Potem and I were in Washington DC, hopefully bringing home tons of money for us. So moving on to council members' requests to add items to future agendas. Now is the time for council members' requests to add items to future agendas. There'll be no discussion on the request. A brief explanation on the request may be given. The merit of the item being requested may not be discussed or debated. Now, are there any requests from my colleagues? Seeing none. I move to say goodnight. And without further business, this meeting is adjourned. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you.